Welcome, everybody.
What?
She said yes.
Welcome, everybody, to this planning board meeting. It's Wednesday, July 20th, 2022. First item on our agenda is a roll call. Tonight, we have one of those. We have Bob Bear, we have John Beckett, we have myself, Phil Ruck, we have Jeff McIntosh, and we have Lisa Buck virtually, there's Krista Switzer, and we assume Dave Thompson will be joining us shortly. Next up, acceptance of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Bring them, Jessica, please.
For the approval of the agenda, Phil Ruck?
Yes.
John Beckett?
Approved.
Bob Bear?
Approved.
Jeff McIntosh?
Approved.
Krista Switzer? Krista Switzer?
Approved.
Thank you. Lisa Buck?
Approved.
That's six four with none of them, sorry, I'm not opposed.
Very good. Next up is approval of the minutes of May 18th, 2022. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Very good. John, you got it? Can I have a second?
Second.
Very good, thank you, Bob. Any edits, comments? I have one. Very good.
Page two, six nine, second paragraph. I think it should be products, not project.
I'll look at that one, thank you.
Okay.
Other comments? Jessica, do you have any? That was our prime proofreader. Any edits to the minutes? Other comments? You're right. We just have one. That means you did an awesome job again, Jessica.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, thank you.
For the approval of the minutes of the May Planning Board Meeting, Thora?
Approved. Approved.
Bob Bear?
Approved.
Jeff McIntosh?
Abstained.
Krista Switzer?
Approved.
Lisa Buck?
Abstained.
That's four for approval with two abstaining.
Very good, just leave it. Next up on the agenda, we have new business this evening. We have two public hearings. First one is a contract zone and site plan review application by Tyler Technologies, Inc., located on five College Ave, Tech Map 19-4 lot 66. The application proposes to change the zoning district for the parcel from medium density residential to village commercial with certain restrictions put in place. In addition, the application proposes to demolish the existing building previously used as a hotel and construct a new office building with a 14,933 square foot footprint to be used for a software development from and approximately the same area of the lot. We have a representative. Give us a summary, please.
Mr. Chair.
That is correct.
Yeah.
I need to recuse myself. I work for Challenger Technologies, so I definitely make the partial. I was asked prior to meeting to tune all your comments because with our remote technology, that owl will pick out comments. Although there are opportunities for you to see cream, but it's required with the technology, thank you. Ruck?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. My name is Jeff Aceto. I'm Senior Civil Engineer with SMRT Architects and Engineers, exceeding representing Tyler Technologies for the redevelopment of five College Avenue. This project involves the removal, the demolition of the existing motel use on the lot and redevelopment for a professional office building for software development. Slide please.
Sophie, could you bring up the presentation?
Sophie, did you hear that? It's called presentation? Okay.
Well, we're waiting. We have a short slide that, well, there we go. Head slide please, so. Joining me this evening is our project team. Julie DiNardo from Tyler Technologies is planning on joining us. She's not present at the moment. Tom Perkins is present. He's President of Jirard Architectural, he's the owner's representative. And we're back there. And from SMRT joining us is Project Manager and Architect, Jesper Johnson. Project Architect, Alex Jenner. And myself, Jeff Aceto, I'm a civil engineer. Slide please. I'm going to briefly, this presentation is briefly for sections. We're going to discuss the contract zone portion of the project. We'll discuss the existing site conditions, all site conditions, and we'll finish up with the discussion of the building's security and help me seal this as well. This slide, please. This graphic shows the proposed site. This is five College Avenue. It is known as Tech Map 19-4 lot 66. The red line is the property boundary, approximately 4.4 acres. Orientation, plan bottom is College Avenue, about 500 feet of frontage along there. Plan left, this is the Stillwater Room. Plan above is the residential properties that are off of University Place. And then here's the north, plan right, that is Murray's Auto Center on College Avenue. Some of the important elements here have been shaded. There is an existing town sewer easement through the parcel. That's the light green there. That's the collector that runs down along the river. The heavy green is the edge of the tree line. I expect most of us know this parcel knows the well developed standard trees right in that area. That is that limit coming through there, the existing building, parking, the pool, and the patio. I'm going to use this graph to briefly describe the existing zoning and why a contract zone is required. Existing zoning of the parcel is medium density residential, MDR. In that area, commercial activity is not allowed. It's a non-conforming use. The motel predated the zoning, apparently, but was placed that way. So redevelopment would first have to adjust the fact that there is not, commercial activity wouldn't be allowed on that use, on that site. So the existing geometry for the MDR is shown by the dark line and partially that dark blue line as well. 20 feet front setback, 10 feet side setback, 20 feet rear setback. There's a 75-foot wetlands setback from the river that is greater than the town setback itself. To coordination with the town staff to create redevelopment, we need to identify an existing commercial district within Orno that can convert this block to that use specifically. The vintage commercial district is identified as the most appropriate district to do that. So we were going to change some of the requirements for this block, zoning requirements, to village commercial. But the approach was to hang on to the MDR requirements that were more stringent than the VC and also add some additional requirements with the intention that when the contract zone is in place, this layout is substantially going to be the layout for this parcel. There will not be a substantially change down the road that whatever development occurs here would be similar in nature to where, where and what this is as well. Briefly, the MDR requirements that were kept were the front side, side setbacks, 20 and 10. The 20-foot setback was brought in the 50 feet. We've offered that as a more restrictive setback to provide more buffer to residential properties back along University Place. So the dark blue line you see is a proposed setback line geometrically for the contract zone. That is more stringent than the VC district, which has, believe, zero setbacks in some places as well. Other requirements that were kept from the medium density residential were the maximum lot size, the frontage, the building cover, all of which are more restrictive. Two elements from the VC district that are in this table are the building height and the building design appearance standards. And then specifically to the contract zone, there are elements that were developed with town town staff, specifically that were setback being increased. The building size being a maximum of 15,000 square feet. Bike and parking requirements. A maximum building area, and also maximum building area in the Shoreland Overlay Zone, which is that light blue line that you can see the existing building, just a little corner of 100 square feet of these buildings in that overlay zone. This draft contract zone was proposed, brought to the council in April at a workshop for their general agreement. And they agreed with this approach. Kyle prepared a draft contract zone that is in your packets, exhibit number six. And there's also an existing contract zone, the parcel elemental, the gazebo was built in 2016 with a contract zone for this area that will be altered by this contract zone. That will become part of, part of the parcel as well. So in short, the site classification would move ahead with this zoning, with these requirements, with the planning board's recommendations of the council, that the contract zone will be established, and the council would in turn review, approve the contract zone. This sets us up for the site classification itself. Uh, slide please. Different conditions, and one more, please. Thank you, Sophie. There's the existing parcel is turned slightly. This is College Avenue here for orientation. It's a little more north off as we do on drawings. We all know this pretty well. My family was in Orno in '78, so we've looked at this building an awful long time. The existing building is about 11,200 square feet. There's the pool, the patio, about 28,000 square feet of pavement here for parking. There's the heavy tree line. Our surveyor picked up the large trees at the edge of the tree line. There are more trees in here as well. The existing, Julie's on the draw of the site, there's a sewer service comes down to the east wing here on site. Water, domestic and fire brought off the College Avenue. And then power is brought overhead to that pole at the north part of the line brought into the site. There's also a gas service right up here that comes into the site as well. The site's defined by the topography, and we turn the contours on here to see, it's about a four-to-one side slope for these contours. So the total proportion of the lot is really here and always will be to preserve that slope. We're well beyond the setback from the river. There's also a female floodline. That's approximately right here. And again, we're well above that. We're well past it. They don't come into play in terms of development for where the total proportion of the site is. Mentioned the Shoreland Zone, yes, thank you. A slide, please? And slide, please. So here's what we'll do, here's what we propose for site plan with that contract zone in place. This is an approximately 14,933 square foot building. It is two-story occupied, similar to the building we have now. And we're going to have additional information on the building and the building height, those requirements, just a moment from Alex. The parking is on the non-river side as before. That's about 24,000 square feet of pavement. It's about 1/10th of an acre of pavement less. Basically due to more efficient geometry for circulation and also meeting the orange requirements for previous area of green space and landscaping and such. The tree line isn't on this drawing, but it's still, it's still there. We're not altering the tree line there. We're not altering three wetlands areas that are on the site. Wetland study is in your information packets. There's a wetlands here and here that are significant, that are associated with the river. They're coming up on the bank. They have a 75-foot setback to each of them. That line is here, and this one is actually inside the 75 of the river. They don't come into play and they wouldn't be disturbed. There's a third wetlands area right up here at the very corner. And that as well would not be disturbed. Actually, most of it is extending off the parcel into the Murray Auto Service parcel. A traffic study was performed. That's in your packets as well. This entrance is actually about 30 feet further away from the College Ave and Park Street intersection. In coordination with the town, the plan was not to move any closer to the impacts there. And we attempted to hold it at first and then realized that we couldn't move it down, create a better circulation. That parking lot only needs one entrance in and out. And so by doing so, we actually improved the traffic to some degree. The traffic study in your packet says that a traffic move permit is not triggered by this project. And if the level of service at the intersection is the same or perhaps even better by being further away from the intersection. We're proposing to close the smaller entrance that comes off here that was probably some kind of drop off to some sort. It's like a legacy condition to me that wasn't really being used very well. Also, you see the next plan was the color rendering that we are kind of moving all the bushes that are along the right of way and on the property line there. They've grown up. They've become site distance issues, if you.
One second.
Yes, please.
Lisa had her hand up. I wasn't sure she.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. When you are showing things on the screen, we don't see what you're showing. You know what I mean? Like you said, where the wetlands were and all that. So those of us who are watching via Zoom can't see what you're indicating. I don't know if it's.
Do you have a copy of the site plan?
I do.
May I back up a little bit and maybe talk them through it? We're looking at the CP 101.
If you could find that. Lisa, can you see the screen share and you just can't see where, where?
Yeah, I can see the screen share, but what, what I'm not seeing is, you know, he's indicated, for instance, where the wetlands are and, and there's your, I see the little cursor moving. Oh, there's good.
All right, so the combination of Jeff and Kyle or Sophie with a cursor will make it work.
Okay, perfect. That would be great. Thank you.
Let me basically, I'm going to start again briefly with the proposed conditions then, please. The proposed building is the large double-lined feature right there that is roughly where the existing building is. And actually, let me do it better the second time. Given the existing conditions on site and given where the limitations to the contract zone are, it's no surprise this is essentially a very similar layout to what's there now. The existing builder removed, but this one's going back essentially in the same place. I have more materials on that. And then second, the parking lot makes sense to be on the non-river side. There's really no option to bring it to the other side. It makes me sense. So where Kyle's putting his cursor there is the entrance. And that entrance location, the single entrance in the parking lot, is approximately 30 feet further, closer to the river, towards the bridge than the present entrance and away from the intersection. And the traffic study indicates that, again, does not trigger a traffic move permit and is equal to or at least a better level of service than we have right now. The three wetlands areas, Kyle will help me out here. We've got one in the westernly corner of the parcel. That will be to your plan left, the far corner. There's a dashed area with some small wetland symbols. That's one of the significant wetlands areas. The second one is at the other lower corner. It's much smaller. It's right there. Thank you, Kyle. Both of those have a 75-foot setback. The smaller one is within the river setback. It doesn't really have any impact. And the other one is within that standard trees and we have, there's no impact from the project for that wetland. The third wetland is non-significant. It's up at the top of the plan. Thank you, Kyle. That, the wetland symbols there, it's just a little bit of wetland area coming over the property line there at that intersection with the Murray Auto Service parcel.
That work, Lisa?
Yeah, that was perfect. Thank you.
The existing utility services are expected to be adequate for the new building. That water calculations show that the new building will produce a power, less than a third of flow than the motel would. And so we're anticipating reusing the sewer service that comes from the building down to the access. The two water services off of College Avenue. We're working with the gas company to coordinate what that service will look like. And then we're relocating the pole, but again, the electrical service will come from the same chief for across College Avenue. Not impacting College Avenue was a primary goal of preserving those utilities. The project does propose a disturbance of that little area. Briefly, so more management. In general, there's just a slightly less previous area than the previous existing conditions. And we're maintaining all the current patterns. The front of the building, the building facing down to the river, for example, that sheet flows down through the lawn. We're not altering that pattern. The parking lot has been draining on the plan, up plan left and towards the property line. It was swaled, runs down along that square is an old foundation, very old foundation. It swells, runs just to the side of that, comes down and moves through that wetlands area into the river. We're going to reuse that, produce catch bases in the catch base of the parking lot to do more sediment collection and make the parking much more defined. Existing lot is very flat. That's been doing too well. But again, the flow is being concentrated to the same place it was before, and there's less than previous areas. From a volume standpoint, there is less. For DP permits, we do not trigger chapter 500. We're under that threshold. We would probably need a main construction general permit, which is disturbance of one acre. The Rose Control details and notes in this set have been designed to the BMPs, and we'll meet the needs of that permit when we need it. Also, we potentially would need a NERPA, a wetlands periphery rule, to reconstruct the pathway. I didn't mention that yet. The, from the building, the pathway coming down with the junk handle on it, that we're moving the path over from the middle of the lawn to restore the aesthetic of the lawn. Put the path against the tree line, a little more aesthetic, more quiet. And then lastly, we'll be within 75 feet or the 25 feet to the river, but the NERPA periphery rule will perform that. But again, Rose Control, that area's been designed by the BMPs, and we will meet the needs. And slide please, so. And a color rendering of the site. And I'm going to finish up with the site on this because we've got some good, good impact to show you what the impact or lack of impact is to the new building. The new building is the white orange shaded area with the heavy black line around it. The parking is the dark gray. I'll put that. The setback lines are the heavy dashed, dash, 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 dash line around the parcel. Property line is the long line, two dashes, long line. And lastly, if you look, there is a red line with 10 feet on it around the limit of the existing building. So we have reused the existing building location, but also due to several factors, pushed the building to the south, towards College Avenue to some degree, to the point where, one, we're approximately 20 feet further away from the property line than we are now with the building. I'm going to say that again. The existing building's about 75, 77 feet from the property line. And the nearest corner of the new building will be 97 feet from that property line. Secondly, I mentioned that the existing building has a small piece that's in the Shoreland Overlay. The new building is not the Shoreland Overlay. That's the yellow line that you see there. And because we shifted it over to a small jog in the building, able to fit that in, so it fits into the limitations a little more successfully than the previous building. That was done to lower impacts. That was done for aesthetics. That was done because it works well for the size of the building. We're bringing back that. Again, I want to point out that the tree line, as long as Google or photograph, is not altered by the project. You know, the large mature trees down by the river and along by the College Avenue. I'll mention last, there were some screening shown in this rendering that is trees and shrubs that are required by the ordinance for buffering between the parking lot and the building for along College Avenue. That concludes my portion of the site. Slide Sophie, please. I can have Alex come up and discuss the building now.
Hey, Diddy. My name is Alex Yonich and the project architect for SMRT. Next slide, please. I can go over the exterior of the building. So the zoning ordinance, as Jeff mentioned, the VC zone, the village commercial zone that was applied to the contract zone has several requirements for the architecture that we tried to interpret in, you see on the screen. Recognizing sort of the design fabric of that town, the idea is to create buildings that have more residential quality to them rather than the commercial flat roof, lots of glass that you see somewhere else. So for instance, slope roofs, materials that are residential in nature, wood siding, brick, lumber, that sort of stuff. And we took those requirements and interpreted them in a way that would, I think, complement the site, complement what you see downtown, but also allow sort of the representation of a tech company that Tyler is, sort of, you know, our interpretation of those elements. So the building height was also a requirement of the village commercial zone. We had a height limit of 45 feet. We are actually under that. We're at 43 and a half. So you can see the red line shows that the peak currently of the two slopes leads at 43 and a half feet above the gray line. The elevation is a sort of, it's a mix of brick, wood siding, material that looks like wood between the windows. And we played with the the planes of the elevation to break up the mass of the building a little bit to make it look more like, you know, I guess residential in nature, but you know, also to give it a little bit more interest and variety, again, because it is a prominent site. You see it as you cross the river. So we wanted to draw the eye to it as you see it, sort of, also make it look like it's been there for a very long time. And so the, the bottom elevation is the south facing the river. We are currently showing photovoltaic panels in there as an energy conservation measure. You'll see that in the slides. Next slide, please. And so again, just focusing on that height. It was important for us to recognize the four and a half, or four over 12 roof slope. But rather than a traditional gable end roof that you might see on a house, we we thought this was a sort of an interesting interpretation of that. And just looking at it like that, I think, doesn't give it enough credit. When you look into the other photos, sometimes later you'll see a little bit more of that. Next slide. So that's the east and the north elevation. Next slide, please. So that's the view coming over the ridge. The, you know, again, Jeff talked about the field in front of the building that we wanted to preserve. Thought that this was a way to respect the site, not create something that will be sticking out there, but rather a compliment to the neighborhood, the town, and, you know, the site itself. Next slide, please. This is a little closer up to the building, again, on College Ave. The, there are two distinct, or three distinct pieces to the building. The middle glass connector is sort of the atrium where you mentor, and you see that on the other side coming up. The two flanking pieces are the office components. Again, you see that little patio in front of the glass connector. See that as an opportunity to work inside and outside. It's, again, brings us sort of a more friendly environment to the building. Not the traditional, austere office building that we are seeing. Next slide, please. This is the view from the river going up along the path. To the left is the tree line that Jeff talked about. And the path meanders and has multiple opportunities along the path to sort of rest and kind of reflect and maybe work out there. It also gives nice views to both the river behind you and to the office building up ahead. And you can see the large overhang over the patio and the glass connector. Again, that's sort of the indoor-outdoor workspace slash an end space slash, you know, just a place to sit. Next slide, please. And again, a little closer up along the path. See the mixed materials, the fabric, the brick. There's a strong stone base along the base of the building. We feel that that was a nice bit to anchor the building. And you can see that, you know, lots of warm wood at the overhangs. Just again, thanks for a warm building and creates these shaded spots on the ground. Next slide. This is a view for the parking lot. Approaching, I guess, heading down the hill, you can see the glass connector, which is the entrance, and the two office wings flanking it. Again, this is a view sort of as you enter the parking lot. Next slide, please. Perhaps so. Thank you, Alex.
So to wrap up our presentation here, there's one item to discuss with the board. That is, on the zoning table, the calculation for bike racks, which is one requirement of the contract zone, one space rate 2,500. The calculation, we did not include the second floor of office space. Kyle has corrected us on that. So there are three bike racks with six spaces on the drawings now. I'd like to ask the board for consideration of a petition approval to add another three bike racks with six more spaces and meet that, meet that need. That was just an oversight for the calculation. With that addition, the proposed project meets all requirements of the contract zone and proposed represents a solid redevelopment, becomes an existing lot, will hire a better purpose. And we think has some great vibes of the town of Orno in terms of its use, its purpose, and also the aesthetics for the bridge, bridge area. The team is ready to answer and address any questions you may have. I'd like to thank everybody for their attention and the time.
Thank you, Jeff. Before we turn to questions, Kyle, you prepared a thorough summary for us. Do you have anything to add to what we just heard?
Yeah, I think, you know, there's a few things.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's a few things to try to touch on. First is just kind of the process because it's a little different than just the typical site plan. So the planning board's role here is really reviewing the project in two parts. There needs to be two separate motions here. The first is a recommendation on the contract zone agreement to council, similar to the planning board reviewing ordinance requirements where the town council is the eventual decision maker on those, but the planning board provides recommendation based on, you know, whether it's consistent with the comp plan goals and things of that nature. Second, the planning board conditionally can approve, you know, if they, if they make that decision, the site plan application piece on the eventual approval of the contract zone by the town council. So there's two different things that the planning board's really looking at here. So first, I, I think I would just touch on, you know, with any zone change, the reason that we, we look at a, a contract zone is because it allows an, an individual parcel for whatever unique circumstances are present there to be rezoned to allow certain uses. But at the same time, you can put in certain restrictions that don't normally apply to that lot. You know, this isn't a situation where the town would just go in and rezone the property as village commercial. And, you know, for the rest of time, the property can be used for any village commercial use. You know, the, pretty much the foundational piece here is that the property would be rezoned to village commercial to allow an office use specifically. And that would be the really only allowable use for any change in use. It would, the contract would have to be amended and come back through the, the planning board process. But with any zone change, contract zones included, you know, the real fundamental piece is, you know, what, you know, why, why consider that? You know, what considerations of the comprehensive plan are there to, to warrant that change? And I think for this property, like a few others around town, the biggest consideration is that the comp plan references the town zoning map, which specifically acknowledges this property and a few other longtime commercial industrial properties around town as being ripe for contract or conditional zoning. And the reason the zoning map and the comp plan referenced these properties specifically is because they were commercial uses or industrial uses in areas that are now zoned as residential and to to maintain that kind of quality and nature of the site was, you know, deemed at the time as an acceptable way to proceed with those sites in the future. But wanting to do it through a, a contract zone, you know, to make sure that the specific project coming forward still blended in with the surrounding residential areas. So, you know, you weren't just coming in, you know, rezoning a property in the middle of a residential area as, you know, industrial and dropping a, a factory. That some consideration and special conditions were put in place to create an environment where, yes, a commercial use could continue, but to manage the, the impact of that on the surrounding area. You know, when you look a little more into the comp plan, some of the goals and recommendations in there. You know, I noted a few of the things in the report. I think one thing that, you know, we focused on with the council and the planning board is the ability of Orno as a town to attract more young families. I think bringing in an employment opportunity such as this in relative close proximity to the downtown and several residential neighborhoods, you know, providing well-paying jobs is, is a fairly substantial opportunity to attract, you know, those young professionals to the community and kind of bring in that demographic that we've seen declining over the years. Another local goal in the comp plan, to grow a diverse economy built on innovation in both new and legacy industries, software development company. And then finally, you know, mentioning the University of Maine related opportunities for commercialization of innovative products and services. The town will create an environment that supports commercialization of innovative ideas, products and processes. I know speaking with the applicant, you know, in the preliminary talks with the town council and staff, you know, a big part of this was the potential connection between, you know, this site and the proximity to the campus and the possibility for internships and things like that. I, I think that's supported in the comp plan and it's, you know, exactly the sort of thing it's getting at was using the university as a, as a a bonus to, you know, improve, you know, employment opportunities and businesses and potential opportunities like that around town. And having that in a, you know, a location where, you know, you're just a short walk away from the campus and, you know, some of those major areas where we have students living around town, I, I think certainly fits in with that idea. So from kind of the, the reason that the contract zone was initially looked at, that's sort of the, the fundamental reasons why. As for developing the contract zone itself and some of the standards in there, Jeff went over a lot of that. We tried to blend the, the standards so that, right, the layout was relatively similar to what's there now. You know, but allowing for, you know, some, you know, certain areas to be done a little differently. You know, the building height goes up a little bit, but relatively the two floor kind of use of a building, you know, is maintained. You, one of the primary reasons that the village commercial was used here as the kind of underlying zone of the contract versus something like the commercial two or something like that was for parking. I think I had the number in the report. Our minimum parking requirement for an office space of this size would normally be a hundred and fifteen parking spaces, which is a lot, especially when you're considering the number of employees that Tyler had talked about. And the fact that your one of the primary goals here is to create a kind of flow of internship opportunities with the university. And you're now in close proximity to residential neighborhoods where people working at the site could potentially live. You know, one of the comp plan goals is growing that downtown area in a walkable, compact manner. You know, creating a more mixed use environment, you know, speaks to that exactly. So requiring more pavement, especially as you're on that slope going down to the river, isn't necessarily something that from an environmental standpoint should be desired. So we tried to look in the contract at using the village commercial, because in the village commercial, businesses don't have a required minimum number of parking spaces. So it allows the applicant to propose what they feel is needed for their use, but not have to build any extra parking. And in addition to that, provide some secure designated parking for bicyclists. Offered that the applicant be a representative on our Black Bear or on our express shuttle committee meeting to take part in those conversations as the shuttle route goes from the downtown to the campus right by this property. And that could be, you know, actually a, a pretty big influx for users on that service. So there is a, a lot of, a, a lot of things there that, that went into using village commercials specifically. From the actual site plan application side of things and you're meeting the ordinance standards, meeting the standards in the contract zone. I, I think a lot of that was covered. I don't have anything too much to add. From stormwater perspective, you know, I went over this with the town engineer, public works director, you know, that, you know, maintaining that kind of existing drainage pattern, but improving on that, you know, how that trickles down to the river seemed to make sense and would not create a, a worse condition. From the traffic standpoint, changing those two curb cuts, if anyone has walked by that area, which that's where we all have, it's not exactly the safest and most optimal way for pedestrian vehicle interaction coming out of that location. So having one curb cut set further back from the intersection was seen as a, a positive and improvement. I don't know if it was mentioned, you know, we talked about the, the parking area being reduced a little bit. The parking area in, you know, one corner of the lot actually extends over the property line onto the Murray's lot. That'll be pulled back to meet this setback for parking areas more than what currently exists. So that was bringing one of those non-conforming aspects into compliance. You know, other than that, the, I think there was a, you know, it showed a, a sign in the architecture rendering, but I don't think the applicant's proposing any signage at this time. They're referencing the application coming back at a later date, you know, for that. Lighting, I know is, is generally a, you know, it's one of those things that can be a potential nuisance concern. The proposed lighting in the parking area and there's a few mounted building lights around the exterior of the building and some bothered lights going down the pathway. Meets the standards of the ordinance, you know, when we talked about light pollution and things like that and light escaping into the sky. The ordinance requires that all lights be shielded on the top to angle the light down. The, you know, applicant provided the types of lighting that they would be using in the application to meet that requirement. Generally, the ordinance requires a four foot candle level at or beyond the property limit. The applicant's well within that, the contract actually requires a more stringent lighting standard than that. So at the abutting property lines, you'll see that in, in most cases, the, the light levels are zero or close to zero. And going down the lawn, it's largely zero going down in that area too. I think it's primarily around the building and the parking area that really provide the, the lighting. Outside of that, I, I don't think there's anything further that I add, but happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Kyle. I will open it up to questions from the board to the applicant. Noise wasn't really addressed. I did see you mentioned the air conditioning unit. Located in that little gap in the center of the building to kind of shield noise, but we don't expect any, any issues with noise on the, on some. That's one of our review criteria.
That, that's correct, Bill. The, the, the upper part of the building is a third form of mezzanine mechanical units. It's an occupied space. The one exception to that is where that cooling is going in between, as you said, on the flat roof. That's going to buffer it both directions towards residences on the bank and also back towards various places. Provide the noise information for that unit and we, we don't believe it's a factor. I candidly, I think the traffic in College Avenue is probably screening anything that's happening over there, no, what, what goes over there, but we did adjust that so that we're not being attacked.
Were there any issues with stormwater runoff? I mean, right now, there's no basins. It just kind of runs off that corner. You mentioned the swale. I'm not aware of any erosion issues. I saw what you proposed. It seems like it would make it better.
It would, it would fail. And if you and I were sidewalk right now, we'd see that the riprap outfall of the pavement is in the wrong spot. The water's running around. So we're, we're going to make improvements and meet the BMPs with their feature putting in there and that will be.
You did bring that up, Wes. Public Works and Town Engineer as well to see if there are any existing problems that we were aware of in that area. There wasn't anything that we currently knew about.
I think to just clarify, that area is the top of the hill by the parking lot. The swell going down to the river is stable. No sign of, some, the sign of transport.
No proposed stabilization beyond your, the last check dam and, you know, your riprap, the plenteal swell, the check dams, standard issue.
Our best approach is to serve as little as possible and as high as possible as well. Then let the rest of it be.
So I noticed that just a small change to the path near the gazebo. Is that what we're talking about for the NERPA?
Exactly.
Within the.
In relation to what a seventy five foot step back from the stream is the last almost twenty five, thirty feet of the path. Comes down there, technically this disturbance is more than twenty five feet, would not require a, a tear spear and visual permit. It would be in the bed up.
Move the existing walk and regrade that just to match the slope.
Correct. That's right. Grain pencil odd. There's some random caps, contours in the middle of the lawn. But again, by taking out the, the gravel, the prime grant steps, we're restoring along through there, smooth it out and restore the aesthetic along from all the way down. The path being against the tree line, we think that's a better line.
We usually get a lot of comments on traffic. Obviously, you don't need a traffic movement permit. But in Kyle's summary, it talks about a variety of factors that the applicant has discussed, such as stagnant employee start times and work from home opportunities could also limit traffic generation on any given day. Do you have any specifics? Or as I, you heard Kyle mention, in our comp plan, we really put a lot of emphasis on walkability and alternative transportation. So if you elaborate a little bit, that's, that's kind of wishy washy as, as far as what you could do. I just wondered if you had any specifics. Clearly, I think the additional bike rack, you know, so we're up to twelve bike. So all of that stuff is right in line with what we talked about several years ago now in the comp plan. So you just provide more specifics on the alternatives for parking. Again, we're allowing that lower parking capacity.
Sure, but I can just send the, sorry, there is a, Tyler Tech has a hybrid model for, for place right now, which is a three two model, I think, that they've done recently. Being pre-adopted to the job. So there's a blend of staff at any given time. They don't expect, you know, full capacity of the building, which I think sixty parking spaces more satisfy that. They, I don't, from what we understand, that's sort of what they've adopted.
So I just have in mind too, because it's a combination of interns or for the number of employees that's proposed. You know, a bunch of those to be interns, as you assume it will be.
We understood that there would be upwards of twenty interns at any given time. And that's probably, I guess, based on when they're not in school, they're returning, vice versa. So I think there are probably some times when there are more interns in the building, less, but no more than twenty.
This is a fast clarification. Kyle was talking about the parking, the contract zone requirements, the minimum sixty parking spaces. That was basically what's approximately what they're now. And the proposed site plan has sixty nine spaces on it, including eighty eight spaces.
I'm all in favor of reducing, as you said, the matches of the towns and the four goals as well. Lighting diagram, I did notice on the back property line, you provided a lighting diagram and it was almost zero, zero point five all along that whole back edge. So the neighbors.
We have high confidence that, so we did not account for vegetation in that calculation.
Okay.
So there is substantial difference in situates back there. So including that, we have high confidence that this is not an impact.
No, there's no existing permit, right? You said it predates, is that correct? The DP. So you didn't have to modify any existing permit. You don't need chapter five hundred by about a hundred and fifty square feet. That's, that's a narrow margin, but I, I didn't notice that number, but there are no existing permits you had modified.
That's your under. That's correct.
Other questions? I, I run a, run a few out there. Other questions from the board?
As the hardwood leaves fall, how much light is going to be going through the parking lot at times of dark in the afternoon and in the morning? Because universal light comes behind there. There's several houses there. But the traffic from, from the car to land, they have that lights on. I think, although we, I think there are chances of people, a lot of motion, a lot of lights into houses, on the other side. Has that been addressed?
I'm not, we have not analyzed that to that extent. That is part of the ordinance, just to clarify that as well. There is, there, yeah, there is vegetation there now that will help us screen that. And I, that's, that's the best information I have.
A little bit about signage. Typically, most applications we see. Typically, most applications, we see a proposed sign. So when you say that they would come back when when they figured out what signage is. So I mean, that comes before the board, is it?
So it would really depend how much signage was proposed. One sign is able to be permitted through code. More than one has to come to the planning board for review. Either way, it's meeting the same standards in the ordinance. The contract specifically adds a kind of further restriction for signage. So normally in the village commercial, you could have internally lit signs, you know, like you see around downtown in certain locations. The contract specifies that only externally lit signs would be allowed. So that means, you know, like a, you know, your typical non-lit sign, you know, with just a couple lights directed shining at the sign, not showing any glare outside of that. So it would really depend what the applicant was proposing at the time, whether, you know, the amount triggered coming to the planning board for an amended site plan or if it was just a a permit for code. But dimensionally, it's the same standards either way.
Just curious, the the dock down there in the gazebo, does the public currently have access? I know it's private property.
There's no official public access there. So any current access there is sort of just in a a practice that may have.
You keep the dock? Does that need to be? I always wondered when people put their just random docks out in the river, whether that actually needs any town approval or whatever.
So it would be a a permit in the shoreline if someone was putting something in. But a removal would just be a a demo building permit through code.
People could kayak.
That that's a possibility. At this time, Tyler does not, Tyler doesn't have a plan to share that area publicly formally. Considered as Webster Park and also the Royal Air Trust and it's a process, we will provide those opportunities.
Other questions from the board? Right, I'm gonna put up a public hearing.
You have a question?
All right. Question, yeah, Lisa?
Yeah. You had mentioned before about the the flood zone from FEMA. And that was one of the times when the cursor wasn't helping us. And I wondered, you know, with climate change, et cetera, I just wonder, I it looks like there's a really far setback from the shoreline, and I know that that's an elevated site, but is, have you taken that into consideration?
Yes, we have. Would you like to get that graphic back up on the screen? Would that be helpful?
Ah, either way, I mean, I just want to make sure, you know, I know that the FEMA maps are are out of date now in terms of.
So we are having an update to that, actually. It's, I think it's currently in process.
Okay.
So that has been updated recently or in the next kind of short period of time.
I think with that slope too, the only impact, Lisa, would be a little bit of a change to the existing path as I as I looked at the plan, so.
That's what I figured, I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, good, good question.
The camera's good enough, I'm gonna come see that. That red line is approximately the FEMA line on the plan. Considered the seventy-five foot setback from the river is essentially right there as well, they're almost the same line. So there's a distance of a hundred and sixty-six feet from the seventy-five foot setback to the building along with an elevation gate of somewhere around twenty to thirty feet. So there's a substantial, the consideration of climate change, the bridge would be under water before the
Okay.
Good question. Anything else from the board? All right. Open up a public hearing. Typically, I recall, we've got a microphone to speak in, Jeff's been speaking in the the corner. The owl is picking up everything?
Yeah. We can have public sit here and comment right front and out.
Let's go with that. One at a time, please, you know, if you could come join us at the table and let us know who you are and and what your concerns or comments are.
Hi there, I'm John Jemison. I am at Ait University Place, so I'm the guy that's right next door. So I could clearly have an interest in this. I want to just start by saying I appreciate a lot of the things in your design, I think that you have you've considered. I think there's a few things, having lived next door for twenty-eight years, I think you might not have completely considered, so I thought I could be helpful to that. I really appreciate the new entrance, I think it's way safer than what was there right now. I've seen people get hit on bicycles, bike, car, you know, it's all, it's very bad right now, so that's really good. Appreciate the the little things that you're doing to make it as practical as possible, I think that's great. That part's great, and I appreciate your efforts to not remove it it the trees that are protected, somewhat protected of us. My biggest concern right now is that when it was a hotel, most nights, there might be five cars that drive in there, and you're going to have a lot of cars coming in. And despite the fact that there is vegetation there, in the wintertime, John's exactly right. It's going to, particularly your five parking spots that are on that far side, they're going to shine, anybody that drives in is going to shine right in, Tracy, Tricia and Abby's big windows, and every time anybody comes along in the building to to pull in, they're going to shine right in in ours. And so one of my questions, would you ever consider putting a fence from, there's a jog in the property line there, right there, that jog right there. Would you consider a tall enough fence to keep that? Because I I think you've done a great job to try to keep the lighting from escaping. It's just all these cars are going to be coming in. And and if if there was a fence that went from that jog down to like the stone foundation, then we would have the benefit of not having to watch all the construction for the next however long it's going to be. And and it would reduce the the noise, and so it would prevent the lights from shining into our house and it would prevent the the noise, or at least reduce the noise, which I think would be fairly helpful. Is is your building going to be a twenty-four hour operation? Is it is it a eighteen hour operation? Is there any time that people aren't coming in and out? I know you're me on shifts, is it like a shift, like a factory shift where there's, there's always somebody doing something there?
Sure, if you can just use as they comfortably. Do you want to reel them all out, address them one by one, or?
Whatever's easy. I I I wasn't sure, you know, you may, some of my questions, you may not be ready to have an answer for me, but if you do.
Let's start to the screen. May I please, certainly, yes. And just for clarity of the gentleman's posture, there are presently cars that send headlights that direction out, is that correct?
Well, when when it was a hotel, there were, but it was like, you know, on on an average evening, there might be six that would come in there.
Still, from an impact standpoint, the lights that are now going that way. However, we're receptive to making it better, we have been all along. And a fence, or possibly evergreen screening, evergreen trees, deep screening, staggered suspected effect would work well. I I'd like the opportunity to work out a solution with the planner perhaps, as to which one is better to get to the site. A fence can cause more disturbance, I mean, it's vegetation, than adding more plants, for example. I'm just seeing that as an option, so we are open to doing a screening there, building to have us want to make it better.
Just just to add on to that, we are pretty consistent in this board for projects that we've reviewed in the past, Dunkin' Donuts and Stillwater Ave. Most recently, the car place right up the way. The neighbors. Yeah, Ben Sickle. So when neighbors bring these concerns to us, I just want to let you know that we do take that seriously. And we we've requested screening, so this this request is consistent with what we've done for.
Very well, we have commercial against residential, we're sensitive to that. Building our, I built, building our, th- this is not a, oh yeah, the, this is a professional office space, so there's not a shift mentality. There are centered business hours, this is not a twenty-four seven operation. I'm not saying someone may come to the building after hours, so to speak. But that's, that's a, that's a unique and specific occurrence. It's not going to be twenty-four seven. I I would suggest to you again, in terms of impact, the motel hours were much more drawn out than the hours of life of the building.
Okay, I just, when they were talking about people coming in with shifts, I I didn't know what that meant like. If they, some people start at eight, some people start at nine, some people start at ten, but Jill quit at some typical hour, like.
I think the shift was more relevant to days rather than hours.
Three days on, two days off, so it's, it gives the chance for people to work from home, but they're working all hours.
All right. That makes good sense, okay, thank you for that. Um, when Tracy owned the hotel, she pushed all the snow towards that vegetative area, right? And when she, when she got enough, then she would come in with a a loader and they would make a big, big wall. And it made a beautiful screen, and so half the winter, we never saw anything. I'm just curious, particularly when five of your parking spots are on that side over there, I'm just curious, where, what what's your plan for snow and snow removal?
I believe that where the parking spaces are, there's enough room to perform plowing, keep the snow on on Tower Text parcel, on flat pile to add.
Can you say that one more time, I'm sorry?
I'm saying that, I I'm hearing that the the previously was snow coming over the property line into your.
No, no, I was, she just pushed everything towards our house, which made a nice, nice barrier.
I I believe it would be a similar approach. We we split the grain the way it's going, we see that the snow will be pushed past it, actually not not over those five parking spaces, more towards where the swale is, to the slowest part of the parking lot. I expect that's where that's going.
Because it, I mean, it, like you said, it's a big parking lot and they, it it, in a lot of winters, it can be a lot of snow. It would, you know, be eight or ten feet tall sometimes, so that 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 sounds fine. My other question was, we're in July. You were, I think in the Pappet, you said you would start in the winter of twenty-three. Does that mean like January or February of winter of twenty-three or March?
It it does, that's our intention now was to begin in in the January timeframe.
And if you're not done by March of twenty-four, and it drags on for another year, is there, you know, or whatever? I mean, I think given the supply chain issues, I'm just curious, when you think you might possibly be really, I mean, what what happens if you're not, how about that?
Fair enough question, and and, oh, I can't, I won't speak to what the supply chain issues are going to happen, nobody could.
Right.
What I can say is we are working with the construction manager, that schedule is made with the construction manager, and they're looking at those items and saying, they believe they can make that target. That, it is a target, for sure, but I believe that's the case.
And how many days a week will they be in under construction? Seven, six, five?
I I believe the intention is a five-day per schedule.
Five-day, five-day construction schedule, okay, that that gives me two days off, that's good. That's great. And there's a T and a G pad on your diagram, there's a transformer pad and some G pad. I didn't, there wasn't much description about what those were.
The G is the generator, the temporary generator.
I'm sorry, it's the.
Temporary generator.
Temporary generator, so is that just like for the building instruction part of this game?
No, that's a, that's a permanent, it's a permanent backup power. It's not temporary, that'll be, that'll be part of the equation.
A backup generator, we have one of those outside my office. It it'll click on only when the power goes out and typically short-term duration.
Oh, that's correct.
Before you're aware, the DP does not regulate noise from temporary generators so long as it is during outages or temp- or normal maintenance.
Our office building, Upstart Center used to house the main supercomputer. So they have a generator and it it's really handy for your electronics that that it needs to go on, but it been there almost nine years and it's going on.
Okay, I just, you know, I just didn't know if that was going to be something that would be a regular thing that was.
The building does not have a data center, it is just a purely office space, so there's no need to run anything. It'll only kick in for for ceiling lighting, they get people out and that's it.
There there may be monthly maintenance where it runs for an hour, but so it's sort of, this is, it's a temporary and transit thing. It's not part of Lester's mission.
All right, that sounds good.
We do have other people in the audience.
I know, I just, well, I just had, I was, that was just about the the extent of mine, I just.
Be respectful of the audience.
All right, so and the lighting that's in the parking lot, you know, Tracy's never had, never had any lighting in the parking lot, she just used the lighting of the building. And it's, is that based on like code of the state that if you have so much area, you need so many lights? I'm just kind of curious.
Certainly, and it's a mixture of the audit requirement that Kyle mentioned earlier, in terms of the property line where it is, it's definitely good practice that you typically have at least one foot candle, two foot candles in the area, and they kind of splay out like contour lines. And so our designers have, you know, provide enough light that it's safe for parking, you can see what you're doing. A half a candle is enough to be able to walk, you can see enough in the dark that way, it could be newspaper too. So they're in that range, and again, it's a mix of the two, but there will be zero at the property line or at the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Some questions. Phil, we did have also one hand raised. I'll go with a hand raise and please join us. Question, Sophie, can you promote or?
Okay. I think that's me that is on right now, can you hear me? Yeah, okay. I just have, it's like a follow-up questions, like with related, in relation.
Tell us who you are.
Oh, I'm Paul Murphy, I'm at Seven Park Street. Basically, if you look out the main doors of the hotel, you can see my house right through the middle of the intersection. Okay, and it is headlights, the possibility of having a diffusion fence or a diffusion barrier to offset some of the headlight throw into the intersection. So that not only it's like people, it's like coming, it's like from Park Street are not blinded, but also it's like help with some of the sedics and just keeping, it's like the light levels from being too out of whack. Because sometimes when there was a lot of people in the hotel, I could see headlights coming, it's like right in, it's like my front windows. It's like from, it's like the parking lot and the people, it's like turning from College Ave onto Park, I have, it's like the trees on my property line to block that light. But from the parking lot, from like the hotel, and it comes right in my windows, and if there's any plans for a diffusion barrier and all that to offset, it's like basically high beams.
It's, I'm looking at the plans, we'll quickly in relation to your, to your home, Mr. Murphy. Yes. And I can see that, to see the angle there, there is an opportunity, perhaps, for some more screening, again, to to put that out there. Especially that stated that there's about ten to twelve feet of property line to the edge of the pavement. I believe our landscape architect already has some things in there, maybe we could improve that or make a mix of more resituates to do sightlines for traffic coming off that park. Offer that as a solution.
That sounds good, so so far, just for planning board too, we're considering this as a condition of of approval. We have screening and I've taken notes that the applicant will work with town staff to determine appropriate screening and I add toward that back line. But now we have along along the front line, looking toward the intersection toward Mr. Murphy's parcel. So I guess, because there might be other neighbors that might mention this, if you would evaluate, work with town staff to look at the areas that that might have potential impact and do what they have to do.
Good luck with the opportunity, there was a hand directly behind you, Phil, I'll be.
I was just confirming, I'm out of back to to University Place, the same, same thing.
Okay.
So that I don't have to get up.
So we've got, we've got three of them, so we've heard that.
And and for for reference, there was more evergreen at one point, but we had one of those odd spring snowstorms that basically destroyed a lot of the trees along that lot line, that's what's.
Destroyed a lot of the trees along that lot line. That's what's up. That weren't technically on the property, but.
Yeah, with our technology, we try to keep it up close so we can capture the voice of Kerry, but. Work, work with us.
Try, try to be a mission for all.
Got it. No, it works. So, so we, I think the applicant has heard that, that message a little bit. All right, you're up.
Thank you, Phil. I'm Beth Lees. Nice to see you, Jeff. Haven't seen you in many years, so. I'm speaking to you. Um, I had a comment just about the air conditioning unit and. As you're talking, it sounds like it will be sort of not encapsulated, but in between the two. Buildings essentially, right? Um, my parents live on Grove Street on the other side of the environmental building, which is, is that where I sometimes work. And, um, I believe there are air conditioning units outside of that building. There is a, there's woods between it. It's not just a few trees. And. One thousand percent you can hear those units straight through the forest. And so I would just. Like you to consider, you know, how much noise that actually is going to be putting off and how much that will be. A deterrent to the neighbors that live next to that property.
I did see a whole bunch of specs included in your unit. I didn't feel like reading them, so I, I put it, put that question to you. Can you elaborate a little bit more? On maybe the technology that you're using and I, I know the air conditioning units as do you, because you were, used to work on campus, but. Yeah, the old land was pretty loud.
Yeah, so.
Please, if you could.
Sorry.
Come closer.
Yeah, the, the units we're considering using right now, um, it's relatively modern technologies, it's, um. It's V R S and they're very cool, which are smaller than the enormous house size metal boxes you're probably seeing a lot on campus. That's. We think fairly outdated technology at this point and not as efficient. So the new stuff is going to be a little bit quieter. Uh, it's going to be a little bit smaller. And the, the benefit of where it sits right now between those two office swings is unlike the. The, the plants that actually don't stop much of the sound, you have a fairly opaque solid mass on either side of it. That kind of prevents it from going elsewhere. The other two sides, maybe north and south side, we have an actual barrier that we're going to put up there, a screen. That will do another benefit of being solid, not allowing the sound to travel much. So it is, I think. You know, short of being closing it and putting it in a box, this is the next best thing that we have.
I didn't notice because I maybe had the walls where that's all it said, but I didn't notice. So you have additional baffles or whatever in the open that is between.
Yep. Exactly. Yeah, they're on the elevations. They're just, you know, it's a solid metal screen, but the idea being that.
And I just have one other quick comment that, um, although not necessarily permitted, um, as a walk, walking space or public space. Down by the river and up the path, the path that you're proposing, I think sounds fabulous. Um, I historically though, for the residents of Orono that have some place. Where people do walk and, um, and I think that the hotel has always been gracious and never made a point about, about stopping people from doing that. Thank you.
Other person? All right, uh, other questions from the board?
Phil?
Yes.
We have, um, Pay, Payson Welsh with a hand raised.
Very good. Thank you, Sophie. Uh, I didn't catch the first name, but if you could, uh.
Payson.
Payson. Payson, could you, you tell us what you, you would like to say?
Uh, greetings. Can you, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, wonderful. Hi, uh, my name is Payson Welch. I live at, uh, twenty-three College Ave.
Lost you.
Think you muted yourself?
Uh.
There you go. We have you back.
Yeah, sorry about that. Could, it could have been, uh, we'll see how this goes. Uh, my name's Payson Welch. I live at twenty-three College Ave. So I'm actually right next to number two, uh, and, uh, and they just mentioned the, the light, so that seems to be a theme. I won't go too far into that. I just wanted to confirm that those, uh, the vegetation is currently between university and place and the site. Um, doesn't really provide much light coverage, especially in winter. And the other thing that I did want to mention though, that hasn't gotten a lot of attention, uh, is sound, so. Uh, there hasn't been a lot of activity at the, uh, hotel, but I do know that sound travels pretty, uh, pretty well from the parking lot to. Uh, my backyard or into the house. For instance, if somebody has, um, a stereo with a, a subwoofer or something like that, so. I would just ask that, uh, you take that into consideration, car doors opening, shutting, um, employees leaving with stereos on. And that's not something that we can control, but, uh, as far as like who's going to play music, but maybe, uh, something like a little wall with some vegetation. Uh, or something like that. And that's not my forte, so, uh, I'll leave that up to you guys to figure out, but. Uh, otherwise I just wanted to say thank you and I think that the, thank you for being so considerate about, um, the plan and maintaining the, the site and, uh. Um, taking all, uh, everything into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've heard visuals greeting and again, anything you can do, we can, we can, uh, just make noise a little bit.
It's also at that, you know, there's a, a behavioral component to noise like that as well. We do have an existing noise ordinance. If for some reason this property, just as with any property, was doing any activity that exceeded. The allowed noise ordinance in the district, then that becomes an enforcement matter for that specific issue. So. Just beyond the whole question of.
You're drinking. We, we get a lot of, uh, applications and in extending the contract zone, you've already acknowledged that you're living inside the neighborhood. So anything you can do with Tyler Technologies to, uh, understand that commission, uh, would be appreciated.
Uh, my, my manager's chair for Payson, uh, Tower Tech has also plans to be a good neighbor and demonstrate that with this application. Uh, also to, you know, points about car doors and large stereos, a motel is a different population than a steady workplace. This is the same population coming to this workplace every day. So there's an education piece there. Those people are, are the employees and there can be more information shared rather than the professionally random. Coming and going of other people who may not have that concern or may not be aware of this concern.
All right, last call for questions.
I do have a follow-up question to Payson. Is there a, if, if, is there a specific. A level of noise in village commercial as opposed to a residential area?
They're fairly similar. Uh, I think the village commercial allows for a few more decibels, but. It would be relatively the same activity allowed in the village commercial. This allows it that M D R.
Thank you.
Sophie, anybody?
Nope, that's it.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Uh, comments, last comments from the board. I think we've covered a lot of issues. We do have obviously the contract zone to discuss first before we move on to, uh, the rest of the others. All right, so, so Kyle, help us with the process typically.
Yes. One thing going back to, I don't know if we need to reopen the public hearing, but I did have a couple of email comments that.
Public hearing, yeah, I know, or at least, or actually, you're up, you can read.
Uh, so there are two, two emails of, of people who I think could attend the meeting. Um. So first is from Nancy Miles Solich at sixty-one North Main Ave. Um, you know, reads. Kyle, thank you for taking the time to answer my questions by phone today. We would appreciate your sharing our concerns with the town council. And at the town meeting tomorrow, we will not be attending as we are still very cold and careful. We live at sixty-one North Main Ave and also own the house at fifty-three, fifty-five North Main and two North Main Ave, which is directly across. From the property requesting the zone change. My parents built their house at two North Main in nineteen forty-seven and we care deeply about the neighborhood. We obviously do not want a zone change to permit new owners to construct bigger and more environmentally challenging buildings and parking areas. You've indicated that Tyler's plans are taking into consideration issues from architecture of the parking in roughly the former motel's area. That improves stormwater management and entrance exit traffic and that they will not build closer to the Stillwater River. These issues are very important to us and this request for zoning change is exactly what we're trying to avoid. When we voiced opposition to the zoning change in April twenty sixteen. Our thoughts are shared by many other Orono residents who are sorry to see the motel go away. It was a valued link to the university, welcoming students and their families and many faculty members. Plus travelers and visitors to our area. We all hope that Orono will carefully oversee Tyler's plans and not approve any major changes. That a new zoning law might allow. I appreciate your information and understanding of our concerns. Please continue to keep us informed about our decisions. I don't know if there's anything there that necessarily hasn't been addressed, but that was a conversation I had with one nearby resident. Then Deanna Prince, um, wrote an email today. Dear Mr. Drexler, I'm writing to express my concerns on the proposed contract zone change and site planner review application by Tyler Technologies and get five college app. It's my understanding that the applicant proposes demolition of the university in a construction of a new structure at approximately the same location. The concerns are related to potential environmental impacts from the proposed project, especially since the parcel is adjacent to the Stillwater River. I'm very interested to know if the applicant plans to increase the amount of lighting above what currently exists on the property. I've lived in Orono for thirty years, most of it in the Webster neighborhood and witnessed. Gradual loss of the night sky due to increased numbers and intensity of exterior light fixtures. My hope is that there will be no increase in lighting above present levels. As there are potential consequences for local ecosystems, including repairing areas along Stillwater, as well as for human health and well-being. I'm also interested to learn more about the applicant's plans for window design and the types of glass used in the proposed building. Large windows that reflect the sky and corner windows can be especially deadly for birds. The Knopps got sore or a river witnesses. Significant seasonal bird migration, so the potential for injury and mortality from window strikes can be quite high. I would respectfully ask that Tyler Technologies carefully consider both their use of lighting and window design and perhaps make a good big effort to preserve the local environment. By going above and beyond the existing ordinance, but it means the planning office has an excellent resource on outdoor lighting quality that provides some suggestions. For how to minimize light impacts and they're excellent resources for designing birds and windows from the American Bird Conservancy and others. So on, on the lighting, I think we, we touched on a lot of that. I would say that, uh, you know, I, I took a look at some of those state. Um, lighting standards in that manual. I think our ordinance was probably drafted in part in reference to those. You know, it talks a lot about the shielding, not allowing light pollution to go up, um, you know, straight up from the property into the sky. Um, and the applicant's providing all the shielded luminaires. Um, yes, there is. More quantity of lighting on the site than currently exists, but the lighting, um, at the property lines. Uh, should not be much of any more impactful than what is currently there. Um, as far as the, the glass and the windows, I don't know if. Alex or anyone else wants to show it to, to have to talk about that. So, um, we have an. For an energy efficiency purpose, we have sun shading devices on the windows, on the rest of the south, east side. The idea being is that when the sun is up high, these things shade the window, uh, and prevent glare. It also prevents the, I think, the mirroring that the, the resident was concerned about. Basically, you don't have that reflection of the sky anymore because of the shade. The windows themselves are, I think, reasonable in size. They're probably no bigger than what you see arriving here as well. Their punched openings, you know, fairly solid massive, uh, elevation, right? So it's, it's, it will be no different than. Any business in downtown here or any larger home for that.
How is, when you, you design this market, when you design these things, do you actually consider? Is the question is bird migration, those kinds of things?
For sure. Absolutely. Yeah, bird safe, uh, bird safe glasses, not a new thing. It's actually being written into the code in some of the west coast. Uh, states, uh, it's kind of making its way here. I think it may start to become recognized as an issue as, you know, Portland develops as, uh, you know. Most of the areas develop larger buildings, lots of more glass. It's what people are thinking about for sure.
Yeah, I remember saddlebags development. There was concerns that they have a bird above the ridge there and that was the heart of their concern, one of their projects was. Was to do with those issues and a green roof and. I, I think when I hear comments like that, this, I just thank them for our next comprehensive plan. Start to think a little bit more. Yeah, what, what we did in our last. Uh, very good. That's it?
Yeah.
Over here again, uh, we didn't have any other questions from the board. First item on our list and procedurally, Kyle, you could help me out again because normally contract zone, I think we've had some come before us, but not at the same time as the application, so. Uh, just discuss the contract zone first and we.
Right, so, yeah.
And one, if you.
I, I think that makes sense is to, to do a, a motion for the, a recommendation to recommend that the contract zone. Move forward to the town council if that's the direction. Um, if there are any proposed changes to the contract language, would include them in that. Motion, so not, that's not necessarily the. The screening or the buffering for the lighting could be a condition for the site plan. That doesn't necessarily have to go into the, the contract. So, yeah, that, that could be the starting point and then move on to the site plan after that. So the board is not actually making a decision. It's more of a, a vote on recommending. Um, whether the contract language moves forward to the council as it's drafted currently.
I do want to add, uh, some discussion to the contract zone because many of you, Mr. Beckett was, was one, uh, participated, Krista. Uh, Lisa, you were here for our previous comp plan. We had a lot of discussion about. Again, the direction that Orono was going to go. We, we did identify certain parcels, uh, the, the fire manufacturing was one. Uh, this one was another and here it's actually come to fruition that a, a project is, is before us. So. This was a really big deal. Kyle did a very good job of highlighting, uh, specific elements of our comp plan. That are directly related to this. So it's, it's actually nice to see our, our comp plan in, in action, in my opinion. Uh, so I, I hope you had a chance to read them in his review that he prepared for us, but. Again, the partnership with the university is, is huge. Uh, again, the walkability, a lot of, a lot of different features that were presented to us today. So. I just wanted to stress that, that this matches up quite well, which is what we talked about for over two years in preparing your company. So, I, further discussion, I guess, on this, we've had a public hearing, uh. Thoughts on the contract zone and I guess that because this is something new, we're going to go around the horn. Mr. Beckett, what do you, what do you think about that?
I think it fits with the comprehensive plan myself. I think, I, especially with the requests to do more screening, this is important, but this is a lot of people who are going to be affected by traffic lights. Yeah, catalogs. That's all.
Well, what do you think? One, one question I have, would you make a change like this? Is this permanent?
Yeah, so the contract runs with the property at, if it's approved by the town council, it gets recorded at the registry of deeds. If for whatever reason, the current property owner wanted to make a change, um. Let's say they went to meet an amendment to their site plan and it, it was something outside of the contract. The contract would have to come back and be amended. If they, you know, insert that full process over again. If the property was sold, new property owner comes in, that contract would stay with the, the property. So if a new property owner came in and wanted to do something different, again, you would have to go back to, you know, through this process of. Meeting with the council, you know, talking about what they're proposing, coming to the planning board and the council for public hearings and then, and being agreed upon through that process.
Seems reasonable. Krista, what are your thoughts?
You're muted, Chris. You're muted. Sorry, we can't hear you. Yeah.
Sorry. The, I think the proposed contract zone really has been carefully crafted and addresses the issues, and I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you. Lisa?
Same, I'm comfortable with it.
So we're passing on a recommendation formal, when we motion. Let's do it. Can I have a motion? I think we're all generally in agreement. Right, can I have a motion, please? Again, this is to approve, I think, just to help you out. Kyle laid it out in the process. So basically, this is to recommend this contract zone. And again, it goes back to council for their formal public hearing and vote. But we'll pass it on to them. Our motion, what we're acting on is to approve this, pass it on to council either as is or with modifications. I haven't heard any modifications. As Kyle said, some of the other concerns can be conditions of approval. So I think the contract zone, based on the discussion we've had, I think it can stand as is. So, ready for a motion, please?
I move that we approve the recommendation of a contract zone agreement with Tyler Technologies for the five College Avenue Tax Map nineteen dash four lot sixty six property. And we want to change it to a village commercial with restrictions, shoreline zone.
Good, thank you, Lisa. Can I have a second? Second, we get further discussion? Justin, please.
To recommend the proposed contract zone to council, Phil Ruck. John Beckett. And Bob Baer is a voting member tonight. Mr. McPausas abstaining. Krista Schwensler.
Approve.
Lisa Bach.
Approve.
That's five for approval with one abstaining.
Thank you, Justin. Next up, the other part of the application to approve the project condition. And Kyle gave us several here, but condition of town council approving the contract zone is one.
Right, that's the biggest one.
Yeah, yeah. I think we're ready for a motion for that too as well.
All right, I'll give it a shot. I move that we approve the site plan approval for a major project on tax map nineteen dash four lot sixty six from Tyler Technologies with the following recommendations. That the town council approve the final contract zone. Am I supposed to read these things? One, one, two, three?
Just go with it, yeah.
The town council approved the final contract zone agreement to change the zoning of the property and allow the office use to operate on the property. And the signed contract zone agreement be recorded at the Penobscot County Registry of Deeds prior to obtaining any building permits. That any necessary federal, state, and local permits are obtained. That prior to the issuance of a building permit, a pre-construction meeting be held between the contractor, property owner representatives, the clerk of works, applicant engineer, town staff, and the other relevant parties, so that a discussion can be had to make sure all conditions of approval have been communicated and the logistics of the construction process have been made clear, so that town staff can raise any concerns involving any temporary measures taken during the construction process. That the applicant add three additional bike racks located adjacent to the proposed racks to provide a total of twelve bicycle rack, bicycle parking spaces as required by the contract zone agreement. And then do we want to add, I think we want to add something about screening. And I would just say that the applicant worked with the town on providing adequate screening for lighting and sound to reduce the impact in the adjacent neighborhoods.
That's perfect. Thank you. I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Before we do this, we have finance effect.
Yes.
Before we vote on this. I might have jumped the gun.
Just don't ask me to repeat that motion.
All right, before us, we have, these are proposed findings of facts. So before we vote on this project, I just want to get all this in the record. Again, these are for discussion, but for Tyler Technologies Inc., site plan review date July twenty 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 two pursuant to Article Six, Section eighteen dash one seventy seven. The Orenno Code Ordinance says, the Orenno Planning Board has considered the application of Tyler Technologies Inc. For major site plan application for the construction of a new commercial office used located in Tax Map nineteen dash four lot sixty six in a contract zone village commercial district. Based on all evidence presented by the applicant, the New England City's town departments and the public found the following. Number one, requirements of the district that the proposed use is an allowable use based on the contract zone agreement, which will change the underlying zone to the village commercial district, and that the proposal complies with the applicable dimensional requirements in the ordinance and contract zone agreement. Any issues there? Number two, compliance with town ordinances and codes that the proposed use structures setbacks, buffers, and layout meet the provisions of applicable regulations of the town, including all pertinent sections of Chapter eighteen land use ordinance and any additional standards created by the contract zone agreement for the lot. Any issues there? Number three, utilization of the site. The site is currently developed, and the project is proposed to be located in the approximate same location in the parcel. And therefore, this construction is within the natural capabilities of the site. It's located in a suitable area of the site, fits with the existing topography of the site and can accommodate any drainage associated with the construction. Any issues there? And four, traffic and pedestrian access. The surrounding rooms have the capacity to accommodate the vehicular traffic generated by the office use in the parking areas meet the design dimensional requirements of the ordinance. Issues there? Number five, storage of materials, that there will be no exposed storage of materials. We didn't really address this, but there is a string dumpster location toward the back of the site where the stormwater system drains out near where the snow dump location was to be. Any issues there? Number six, stormwater management, that adequate provision has been made for the collection and disposal of all stormwater. Any issues? Number seven, erosion control, that the applicant has provided an erosion and sedimentation control plan will follow applicable best management practices. Any issues there? Eight, water supply and sewage disposal, that the site can be served by off-site water supply and sewage disposal. Nine, utilities, that adequate provision has been made for all utilities. Issues there? Ten, natural features, that the project area is located in the area of the site. It's already developed and impact the wetlands, the tree line, and the western portion of the lot. And other natural features will be avoided. Are there any issues there? Groundwater, number eleven, groundwater and surface water quality protection. Proposed development and use will not adversely impact the quality or quantity of groundwater available to abutting properties or to public water supply systems. Any issues there? Twelve, hazardous special radioactive materials. The use of the site is not involved handling, storage, or use hazardous special radioactive materials. Comments there? Thirteen, shoreline relationship, that a portion of the lot is located in the shoreline zone. However, that no portion of the structure to be used as an office is located within the shoreline area. And that the only changes to the site within the shoreline area will be to reorient the pathway leading down the slope to the existing gazebo. Comments on that? Fourteen, solid waste management, that the proposed development provides for adequate disposal of solid waste. I'll just mention that. Issues there? No, fifteen, historic and archaeological resources, that there are no historic or archaeological resources proposed to be impacted by the project. Comments on that one? Sixteen, financial capacity, that the applicant has the financial capacity to carry out the project. I think they demonstrated that. No issues? Seventeen, noise, and lastly, noise and lighting, that the use will operate within the noise and lighting standards and town ordinances. We did cover this earlier. Any further comments on that one? No, I think we're good. We have a motion. We have a second. I think we're ready for a vote.
For the approval of the Tyler Technologies site plan, Phil Ruck. John Beckett. Bob Baer. Krista Schwensler.
Approve.
Lisa Bach.
Approve.
John McPausas abstaining. So that's five for approval with one abstaining.
Very good. Congratulations. All right. Next up on our agenda. Next up is an amended site plan review application by University of Maine and Radnor Properties LLC, located on one sixty eight College Avenue, Tax Map eleven dash zero lot seventy seven in the University District. The application proposes amendments to a previously approved site plan for the redevelopment of Coburn and Holmes Hall, used as a hotel. And I believe, Bob, you might be accusing yourself. All right, why don't you just stay right up here with us?
That's all right.
Yeah, you did.
Sophie, Jody O'Neil is the applicant representative. Would you be able to promote her?
She is.
Very good. Jody, could you give us a summary of what you propose this evening?
Yeah, um, so, and I can share my screen if you like. I'm assuming you guys have plans there, but we can do it however. So basically, going through the process, you know, we've been here a couple of times already. So we're coming back to you guys because we were going through stuff with, like, the historical preservation people and the National Park Service. And so during their final review, they had a couple of comments, things that they wanted to change. So basically, one of them was they wanted those two buildings separate. So for Holmes Hall, and then we kind of had the addition built on, so they wanted to keep those separate. They wanted Holmes Hall to also be lowered and not be as high as we were proposing. They also wanted certain trees to be saved. Trying to think of the other ones. Parking, we had three parallel parking spaces on the Munson Road, so they wanted those to be taken out. So basically, these, these changes and saving certain trees, we kind of had to change the parking, change the building, which in turn changed stormwater and things like that. So those are kind of the brief overview of the changes that we had made. We kept the stormwater as far as we're still using the filter. We're still using the bioretention cell. The bioretention cell is just a little bit different shape because in the front, they wanted a couple trees saved. So we just kind of looped it around. The filter on the back is pretty much in the same spot, just the parking configuration changed a little bit. And then it actually reduced the amount of impervious area, so we eliminated the filter at Coburn.
So I think. Ask the board, Lisa, would it be helpful, or, you know, Krista as well, would it be helpful? She mentioned that she can share her screen. Would you like Jody to walk us around that? Or are you okay with the plans?
I think it'd be nice to be walked around it.
Hey, Jody, well, Sophie, if you could help Jody share a screen and open there and tell us that works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You see it?
Yes.
Okay.
What we need, just, we just had an applicant before us, so if somebody could walk. So I think we need to help you, or do we?
No, 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 she can do it. Jody's actually sharing her screen.
Okay.
You can see my mouse here. I mean, I can draw on it too, if you'd like.
No, if you just walk us around with a cursor, that would be great.
Okay, I guess we'll start at Coburn. So this area here, they wanted these trees saved, and then a couple trees. I think I froze up here. Couple areas here saved. So that basically made, we had to change this parking. We originally had road parking here, and then this was pushed out of bed, road parking there. So that got reduced, you know, this basically to pull this in to not hit any of these trees. And then we had a filter unit before, it was like in this area, so now that's gone. And then I believe the driveway was going straight this way, and so we kind of had to curve it to go around those trees. So that's the changes at Coburn. Over at Holmes Hall here, we had, the two buildings were connected. So it was Holmes Hall, and then essentially an addition that was back in this area here. So they wanted it separate, so we put a walkway through here to connect everybody, you know, for pedestrian use. And so pushing out this building, we didn't want to get too close to alumni, so we kind of had to push, push this out here, where before it was more, you know, I don't know exactly how it was, but it was thinner. And it was connected, so that changed the parking through here. Our filter unit for stormwater is still back here where it was. We added some parking behind the library. So before, we had parking that went all the way down this way. So we couldn't do that because of the building. So that was added there. And then in front here, they had some gardens, and all these trees that have these dashed circles are what the park service wanted to save. So you can see it did change our road alignment. We were kind of coming more at a ninety originally. So now we had to kind of go back, kind of halfway between what we had before as far as coming off at an angle when it is now, and then our ninety, so we're kind of in the middle of that. And then they did not want us developing kind of past that line. Bioretention cell is still here, is just a little different shape. And let's see what else we change. And then we had a walkway kind of coming up around in front of Winslow Hall and kind of looping around. So as of right now, we're not building that. We're just going to have it come out of Winslow and then loop around that way. Pedestrian traffic will just kind of come how it still does, coming up here or coming across there. I think those are the changes. Kind of a brief overview.
Well, thank you. Kyle, do you have anything to add to your summary that you provided us?
Yeah, compared to the last one, it's a bit shorter part. Yeah, I think the only thing I would add is just, you know, looking at the parking requirements, a few of the parking spaces. The previous version of the application had a few parking spaces being utilized in the steam plant parking lot. This application with reducing some of that parking area shifts a few more spaces over there. That's not really a concern. I mean, the primary bulk of the parking is still, you know, kind of right outside the proposed use. It's still under the, you know, the same property owner and reasonably connected through crosswalks and sidewalks to that, the steam plant parking lot. So there's no real pedestrian risk there as far as that goes. Other than that, I think Jody touched on everything. And when it comes to the dimensional standards, I mean, the campus is also in the university district. There aren't a ton of setback in dimensional requirements to begin with, but where this is located, sort of deeper within the campus, you know, setback a bit from. but where this is located, sort of deeper within the campus, you know, setback a bit from college have, there's, you know, it doesn't really come into any setback issues or anything like that. So it, it was some minor changes that required officially amending it through the planning board, but no real new issues created.
So, thank you, Kyle. Let's open it up to questions from the board. First one, Jody, and I mentioned this the last time you came before us, but all of the changes, the differences in impervious area between this plan and the last will be accounted for with any changes, the university permits at some point, correct? So that the town is covered, so that all, all necessary permits will be addressed. Maybe not right at the moment, but eventually as part of this project.
Right, so once this is, you know, finalized and we get all of our approvals, I'll give everything to Sarah and give her all of our calculations and she just, essentially when they go, they'll just give that to the DEP for their next amendment to that permit.
Very good. Just want to confirm.
Sure.
Yeah, other questions from the board? I do not have any others. Right, I am gonna open up the public hearing. Sophie, is there anybody online? Because there's nobody here in the room. Except.
There are people online, but nobody has a hand raised.
Okay, we do have a, yeah, yeah. Bob, if you could, yeah, I'm Bob Baer. I live at ninety-nine Forest Avenue for quite a few years. And I'm speaking for myself and family, not as a member of the board. When I saw the tree removal plans, I decided I want to go in and have a look and see what's happening because one of those deciduous trees was planted about fifteen years ago as a memorial for my wife who died in two thousand and one. We appropriate, we gave funds to the university. They planted this memorial tree. It happens per ashes around that tree. It's a place where a kid's wife and I went on Mother's Day. That's how, that's how that location came about. So I've got photographs, because again, it wasn't clear to me of what was coming down. So a couple of deciduous trees that were indicated. And it's my request that that tree either remain or be moved. And I'd like to put something in writing to whoever's appropriate. So perhaps, Jody, you could tell me who I should contact about this.
Um, well, Nick, either Nick or I or both of us, do you know what tree it is? Because we were, you know, we're trying to save this many. But do you know, like, if, if we're looking at the plan, do you know which tree it is?
When I looked at the plan, it wasn't clear to me what which tree on that plan. So I have taken photographs that I can email to whoever is appropriate.
Okay. Yeah, if you could, you could email it to me and I can pass it on to Nick or both of us.
Phil, do you have contact information for Nick or Jody?
I have contact.
Yeah, so, Jody, you know, this request, again, might, I don't know if it's coordination between university representatives, Radnor, and, and Mr. Baer to see what can be done. This is a rather extenuating circumstance. I've, I've never come across this one at the board, but a pretty serious issue, that it'd be really nice to see if it could be addressed.
Yeah, right. And, you know, like I said, we do have a lot of trees that we are saving. So it would be nice.
Maybe at the moment, but it'd be nice to determine.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Right.
And who should I contact at the universities so that they're made aware of my request?
Um, it would probably be Stewart.
I have, I can email you tomorrow.
Stewart's the facilities director.
Yeah, so if we can figure out obviously which tree it is, that would be helpful and we can figure out something.
Thank you.
You're a member of the public.
Thank you.
Thank you for considering that, Jody. Sophie, anybody else?
No, you're all set to go, Phil.
Okay. That's the end of the hearing. Further comments from the board? All right, before I jump again on a motion, Kyle, I think you have proposed findings of fact. I'm gonna read these proposed findings of fact in the record, and I'm not gonna pause between. And we'll, we'll give a yea or nay at the end of this. These are, again, proposed findings of fact for consideration and comment or edits of the University of Maine and Radnor Property Group LLC for their site plan review dated July twentieth, twenty twenty-two pursuant to Article Six, Section eighteen dash one seventy-seven, the Urno Code of Ordinances. Urno Plan Board has considered the application of University of Maine and Radnor Property Group LLC for an amended site plan to a previously approved plan for the redevelopment of homes in Coburn Hall, Coburn, excuse me, as a hotel located at tax map eleven dash zero lot seventy-seven in the university district. And based on all evidence presented by the applicant, the viewing agencies, town departments, and the public found the follow. Number one, compliance with town ordinances and codes. That the proposed use structures setback, buffers, and layout meet the provisions of applicable regulations of the town, including all pertinent sections of Chapter Eighteen land use ordinance. Number two, traffic and pedestrian access. That the changes, excuse me, the parking layout and sidewalk meet the standards and requirements of the ordinance. And number three, stormwater management. That adequate provision has been made for the collection and disposal of all stormwater. Four, erosion control. That the applicant has provided an erosion and sedimentation control plan will follow applicable best management practices. Five, utilities. That adequate provision has been made for all the utilities. Six, historic and archaeological resources. That the applicant has amended the building layout based on comments from the National Park Service. No other historic or archaeological resources are impacted. Seven, natural features. That impacted natural features will be avoided to the extent practicable, and a landscape plan has been included to add additional vegetation to the project area. Number eight, other findings. That all other findings from the original site plan approval approved by the planning board on October twentieth, twenty twenty-one remain unchanged. Are there any comments, concerns, issues with any one of those? No, I can't see any online either. All right, I think we're, we're ready for a motion.
All right. I'll give another shot. I, I move that we approve the amended site plan review application by University of Maine and Radnor Property Group LLC located on one sixty-eight College Avenue, tax map eleven dash zero lot seventy-seven in the university district. Were there any? All right.
Yeah, there's no condition. We're good. We have a motion, have a second. Second, very good, further discussion. Jessica, please.
For the approval of the amended site plan, Thora? John Beckett? Mr. Baer is abstaining. Krista Schwensser?
Approve.
Lisa Buck?
Approve.
That's five for approval with one abstaining.
Next up is discussion. Kyle, what do we have up for next month?
So there are two applications that came in for next month. Both fairly small in nature. One is another amendment to the Forest Hall subdivision, already adding a couple more lots that previously existed there. And the second is a minor amendment to the RSU site plan. You know, the, the big project, obviously, throughout that, there were a couple of changes with some basically accessory structures, some that were proposed to be removed that they'd like to keep for storage. And basically, it just involves coming back for a, a minor amendment to reflect that on the site plan and show the new locations. That's all that's coming so far, and really we're past the point of new applications for August. So it'll be a fairly quick turnaround with August meeting with the way the weeks are laid out. So August seventeenth will be the, the meeting.
Right, will be traveling. We have anything else on the horizon?
And there's a number, a pretty high number, I feel like, of projects that are kind of in that conceptual phase where, you know, people are either discussing ideas or, you know, at the stage of working with engineers, starting to put things together. So no specific dates or times when those things will come forward, but, you know, I think we're gonna continue to see some, you know, medium to bigger projects over the next.
A long time. Very good. I think next up is adjournment. I got a motion.
We adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Kyle, Jessica, you can sort it out.
Right, for the adjournment of the July planning board meeting, Thora? John Beckett? Bob Baer? John McIntosh? Krista Schwensser?
Approve.
Lisa Buck?
Approve.
That's six for with none of standing.
See you in September.
Thanks, Andrew.
Enjoy our summer.